Okay.
Oh, so I just want to say, you know, school safety is a top priority. I've heard all the concerns. I know we do have a meeting set up tomorrow. I can tell you that our team. I think that.
For what meeting?
Okay, so we have, I'm available to meet prior to the time you requested tomorrow with our team. And as far as the issue with the transportation, we got on top of that right away with Mr. Salee, our Mark Andrews. I'm very sorry for the whole situation. I don't want to obviously get into, you know, details publicly because I know we're going to meet. But as far as the routes go, I do want to point out that 50% of our special ed bus routes are in, are with our own fleet. It's about half. The reason why we contract out is because we just don't have enough bus drivers and buses to run the routes. But we do expect the high standard with our contractor and with our, and in fact, it's in our contract, and our team has been in direct communication with the contractor and the bus, and they've taken action as well. So again, sorry for the situation. As far as the schools, other school safety, that is a top priority. I appreciate your concern. There is a situation where the CARE HOC, as we're transitioning, there have been some units that have not been working properly. But we have been training our staff on how to provide multiple forms of communication, which we would have done even prior to the CARE HOC. We used to have a Duquesne system, and we would have the same kind of situation. So what we've been doing for a positive is to have redundant communications that go to staff to alert them of emergencies during the transition time, because we have not finished with the contractor. I can tell you with the CARE HOC that Mr. Addy and Mr. Wall and others have been in direct communication. In fact, the head of their company even put in a call to me. So they're aware of our concerns. We're working with it, but we also have notifications. Again, with what was discussed about the Forts, and we know we can improve communications. Everyone was very, I think, coming off of Oxford. We were already doing our training anyway, but that obviously brought an extra, I believe, you know, anxiety when things happen, and I appreciate that. I'm a parent as well. And so what I am saying is I am making safety a top priority. There's some things we can do better, and there's other things that we've been doing for quite a while where we're still leading. And so as superintendent, our entire team, we're, safety is number one, always will be. So just wanted to make those comments. And I appreciate all the comments made. I've been listening and, you know, hearing from you all, and our team will be meeting on some of those issues and will address them and address the, you know, concerns from the community.
Okay. Trustee Thor.
Earlier, we talked about STEM, and then it was brought up again during citizen participation that communications are going to be going out. Do we know how soon communications are going to go out to potential students and when they have to have decisions made by, since we're approaching the end of the school year?
May 4th?
Yeah.
So they already were?
June 4th.
May 9th.
Also, when?
So the testing ended on May 4th? Sorry, I'm trying to use the microphone so people can hear.
So NW, I have May 4th on the notes that the parents who, of students who qualified, they were going to be notified. But not every student is qualified, so obviously not all parents will be notified.
Question on that. May?
Go on, then I might have one.
On the same question.
Is there a question?
Every, every student who applies or every family that applies to this program, they get in, they get notified. But the ones who don't get accepted, do they get also notified that they were not accepted?
I was not aware that all parents would be notified.
Thank you.
Those who qualified were going to be, if there's a need for all of them, we can revisit that.
We're leaving some families in the dark to find out if they got in or not?
So of the change of the criteria?
Not change of the criteria. I'm talking about when they apply, are they aware of, hey, you have been accepted, or similar to the, how universities do admissions?
So if, if parents of students apply for them and they were not selected, they will also be notified?
Thank you.
Right.
Now, normally, my memory of the system is if you had, and this is the old system, if you had the score, you got an invitation, let's say, to an open house. And then I believe that the process started from there. Is that still the system?
Yes.
All right. So if students qualified, they'd get a notification. They'd be invited to an open house to help them decide if the program might be right for them. Then they could apply, and depending on the number that apply, there might have to be a drawing.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
So I'm not sure about the open house forum, if it's going to be the same, but the notification will follow the same timeline, meaning that parents will be notified. We can revisit that and make sure we communicate that.
I know at Henry Ford Early College with the lottery system, a lot of parents called me and referred them to the administration about, hey, my son was not selected.
Right.
Which is.
Same thing would happen here.
Yeah, same thing with STEM. That's good. And I, by the way, when I signed up to Academy of Engineering Technology, which was merged later with DCMSD, I went to an open house with my parents, and we saw all the teachers there. And I wasn't told I was going to be selected. It was after they reviewed my scores, and my scores weren't pretty. But after that meeting, Dr. Green, who still actually has that school, felt I would be a good student in that program, although I did not meet with my test scores. My, my English was, I was in the country for two years, so my English scores were terrible. But my science and math were really sound. So she said, I'm going to talk to Dr. Schreide and see, we have Dr. Schreide who does the testing, and see how well you did on that entrance exam to Dearborn Schools. And I took that exam in Arabic. I probably still have copies of the result. So when, when they saw that, those two individuals, although I did not do well on the meet, they said, we need to recommend him to this program. And I barely spoke English, but I think I turned out to be a good student. So we need to make sure that we're giving every student the possibility to apply.
Absolutely.
And a testing score is not something that we should definitely just focus. If you don't get good on the test, we can talk further about testing, and this is another animal that we have to get into. As we basing admission, and I'm glad that we're moving now into allowing more criteria. Obviously, testing has still has to be happening. In order to go to law school, you still have to do the LSAT. Or to go to the University of Michigan, Ann Arbor, you have to score really well on the SAT. This is a high-stake task, along with your GPA, but it goes, now universities are actually looking into the whole rounded application.
Trustee Moser, can we get back on track?
Sure, yeah. We'll get back. Sorry for being sidetracked, but we need to do better.
So, yeah, I do, I am aware of unique situations where principals and other staff members advocated for individual students, similar to the case that you have just presented. And we'll make sure that the communication is happening, and especially with the parents of students who applied and didn't make it, or the parents who applied for their kids and their kids made it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have two things that I want to mention, and they're very important. One, I don't know if Ms. Butler is still here, but she mentioned that staff member who's being suicidal. And I hope Ms. Butler, if you're reviewing this tape, please get with administration again. I know you've been frustrated, but we need to get a report of that. That has to be reported. The students cannot just keep that with their parents. I was not aware of this until today. At least I have not seen it in my, in emails. So please, if something like this happens.
Their information was taken, there's going to be communication.
Okay, please. The other thing is, we have one employee in this district as, as an elected body, and that is our superintendent. So a lot of people have reached out to me, reached out to Trustee Barry, reached out to Trustee Thor, all of us, what, since they're, oh, can you please do this? Can you please do that? And I tell them, I have one employee. I try to help them navigate the system. Have you talked to the principal? Have you talked to the executive director? Now you have to go talk to Dr. Maleko. Dr. Male, and to Hussein's mom, Dr. Maleko did not respond to you in a reasonable manner? Please forward that email to trustee or President McDonald and ourselves, if you'd like, all seven of us, because that's it. You reached Dr. Maleko. Now you have to go to the next step, which is ourselves. So for us to be held accountable, I need to be aware. And I'm sorry, this is something that you will have to do extra, and I know it's frustrating, but I was not aware of your situation except for that social media post, which I also, you know, I should have followed up myself. And not only this, I have followed up with Mr. Andrews about another similar situation of a special student who their parents suspected, because he was being dropped off last, that they were being, and I addressed that with Mr. Andrews and Dr. Maleko. I don't remember if I involved Dr. Maleko, which I should have, but I want to launch an investig, I'm going to call and move a motion to launch an investigation into National Trails incident that Hussein's mom had, and also other, to review all of the tapes that they've had. I don't know how much this would cost, but I would hope that we go down to this, because National Trails, as I checked the contract, we moved to them, we moved away from Trinity two years ago, I believe, with a contract, because National Trails brought in a competitive and grant, or proposal to be our carrier, to be our third-party transportation. And we, I don't know how much was the contract. I believe we discussed this publicly here. So I want to, it's a motion on the table right now to launch an investigation to what happened to Hussein, and I know that student was already mentioned, and that situation. There has been probably now an investigation, but I also have another name that I would like to move forward, and I'll share that with the administration. And I thought this was one thing.
Trustee Moser?
Yes.
There was an investigation?
Okay.
And also.
It was not an isolated, it seems like it was not one isolated incident, because, let me finish. This parent reached out specifically to me, and Mr. Andrews is here, and I specifically told him, and I asked him, please, the mother, she is limited English proficiency, have somebody translate things for her. She's being very wary. She has a special ed. And she said, he's the last person to be dropped off, and she gave me permissions if I wanted to use this. But I don't want to get into details, but I want to launch an investigation into this third-party contractor to review all of the tapes, if they have any cameras on their phones, or I'm sorry, on their buses, to see if they did anything to any of our students. And not only this, is to address this with this company, if it needs to be, that we need to look into ways of, of switching the busing, as was suggested by another citizen. We use our own buses for special ed. I think that makes a whole lot of sense, even if it costly, doesn't make sense.
Thank you, Trustee Moser.
Thank you. So it's, there's a motion on the table, so I'd like.
Point of order.
Yes, go ahead. Trustee Moser, that is not a motion to be made. It's a direction. You don't make a motion for something like that.
Where the oversight by?
We can direct the superintendent to investigate. You don't make a motion on, on, on that kind of a direction. I'm just giving you the point of order for what motions are.
The things have been brought in to our employee.
And we're going, and you can, we can direct Dr. Maleko to follow up and, and give us a, a
It's something different.
Record.
It's something different what I'm asking. I'm asking, maybe, we're asking as an elected body. I would like Dr. Maleko to do it, but I would hope that we.
But it's not made in the form of a motion. That's why I'm explaining.
Well, I'm making a motion to launch a third-party investigation. How about this? That we would hire an attorney or a company that would review all of these tapes and, and, and give us an analysis. Maybe they will come back and say, everything was good. We didn't see any incident on this cameras or, and then they would ask the drivers who were there on those days. I think we, we have some leeway. We have some legal ground, and we have to check with our attorney that we can talk to this company and, and, and get it answers. The mother's asking for answers, and I don't have answers for her.
But right there, where you said we need to check with our attorney, shows that this can't be a motion. It's can be a directive.
I do not feel comfortable.
Dr. Maleko, do you understand Trustee Moser's directive? So, yeah, gather that information. If there's going to be an investigation, there's a cost to the taxpayers. We'd like to see what those numbers are. And at that point, we can, we can approve or not approve moving forward, so.
That's not what I'm asking for, but it's okay. The other thing that I would like to, more information, is I know we've been briefed on the HOC system, but if it's still malfunctioning until today, I would like to know that. Thank you.
You want me to comment?
Okay, next item, please.
Special report, infrastructure and finance community survey results. Doctor, or Mr. David Muston.
I thought you were going to go to a German.
Good evening, Board Trustees. Thank you for this. I will try to make this brief, given the late hour that we are at. The board did ask us to do several things. One was to commit to several town hall meetings, which we did. We held five in-person, one virtual. Also, the board asked us to do a community survey, which we also did. The survey was published on April 12th. It remained open until May 5th, and it was shared through various mediums, including we paid for some advertising as well to get out there. I'll let the numbers kind of speak for themselves. You can see where some areas of the city responded to the survey a lot more. Lots of current district parents did respond to the survey, so I think that that's a good sign that we got to see what our parents were thinking, which I know was kind of the motivation of this board, was to get more in, further input from, from parents. The age range as well kind of coincides with, with that same demographic. Some general questions that were part of the survey, that were included with the survey, the overall direction of the Dearborn Public Schools. You can see that overall that was favorable for those parents. Asking about prioritizing district needs, a lot of the same needs that the parents and, or the people who responded to the survey, a lot of the needs were the, were mirrored the outcomes of the VIP committee, as far as what those needs were. They also mirrored the results of the survey that we did in the March, February, March of this year, when we surveyed our staff at the request of the VIP committee, and we did a survey of staff, and those results also mirrored these. This is the same results, just looking at it in a little bit different bar graph. Once again, I think important to point out, these results mirroring, giving the same type of results that our VIP committee submitted to us was, you know, new buildings and schools are essential for improving learning in the Dearborn Public Schools. You can see that a lot of people felt strongly about that, and also about upgrading existing structures and facilities. A lot of people had that same, felt strongly about that, felt that both of those type, those issues were a high priority need. This, again, kind of reflects what we saw with the staff survey and with our VIP committee.
David?
Yes?
I know we want to move through this.
Sure.
I want to point something out here.
Yep.
That out of the 869 return surveys, 60% of the people felt strong, agreed or strongly agreed to this, this point, so.
I think that's an excellent point to bring out.
Just moving forward.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. So we have the question, the VIP committee felt strongly that this district should be discussing a fourth traditional high school. We do currently have four high schools in this district. We have three traditional high schools, and we have an early college program that over 600 students attend our early college program with a demand for more space in that program.
So you skipped one slide, infrastructure preferences. That came up a little bit higher. 85% was felt strong, or felt agree or strongly agree. And that's exactly what the committee came back with.
Absolutely. No, thank you.
I just want to point these out, so we're on the same page.
Thank you, Mr. Trustee Barry. I appreciate that. So again, the VIP committee felt strongly that this district should entertain that discussion about a fourth high school, a fourth traditional high school. So what these questions did is they presented that option. They presented various factors that would be, that would pertain to adding a fourth traditional high school, and then soliciting what the responses would be. There, there definitely, as you can see, as we go through these questions, there definitely was a strong feeling that, that there, there could be a need for a fourth high school. It does change a bit when you, not much, but there is some changes when you add in some varying factors, some additional information, such as the length of time it would take before that fourth high school would get, would be online. Also, bringing in the fact that a fourth high school could change the boundaries for all of the high schools. So that, too, did change the numbers a little bit, but still strongly leaning toward that discussion of a fourth high school, fourth traditional high school. And then bringing in the factors, the cost factors involved as well, that did kind of even the playing field a little bit, but I think it is important to point out that there still was support for that fourth traditional high school, that that should be part of that discussion, at least part of that discussion moving forward. Looking at overall support for a bond issue, you can see that we, there, there was, overall, there was, there was some favorable support toward putting some type of issue on the November 22nd, or on the November 2022 ballot. Again, asking this, the, the same question, but yet providing a little bit more information about how the district is spending ESAR funds as law, as well as funds in the general, in the general fund budget, and directing those funds towards some of our infrastructure needs. If the, if knowing that fact influenced how people felt about supporting a possible bond issue. Then we ask if, how those, how those taking the survey would feel when you looked at the tax rates? If the tax rates remain the same? If the, if, if the tax rates declined? Or if the tax rates went up a bit? How did that make people feel about their support for a bond issue? You still had favorable support. However, you do see that, obviously, some of the other responses on the other side then increased as well. We then ask about a sinking fund, which is different than a bond issue, and ask how those, how they, how those taking the survey would feel if a sinking fund was put into place as opposed to a bond, a long-term 20- or 30-year bond proposal. Again, favorable results as long as that tax rate remain the same, or if that tax rate declined a little bit. So that's a very brief overview of the survey results. All of you were provided with this information, so hopefully you had opportunity to look that over. And, and I'm available for any questions. So is Mr. Mark Andrews is here, and we also have our friends from Plant Moran here as well.
Trustee Petchikoff.
Just out of my own curiosity, even though, you know, I, I know there was some issues, and there always is an issue with town halls and, and attracting an audience. Did you have any kind of a audience that gave back, you feedback as well? Or was it a fairly small number who attended and, and a response that you couldn't really quantify?
I think it would be fair to say that quality is better than quantity sometimes. And although the numbers at the town hall meeting were meager at best, we did solid, we did garner some quality comments from those who were in attendance. Those who took the time to show up and attend, I applaud them for doing that, for being active citizens in our community. And their comments, I thought, were, were very beneficial, and their comments reflected many of the outcomes that we see and hear, that there should be a discussion in a fourth high school, very much a concern about taxes in our community, and also looking and addressing the infrastructure needs of our district and developing a long-term plan.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Barry.
Follow-up with Trustee Petchikoff. I attended three of those. Probably the most valuable was the one at Dearborn High. It was good discussions. I mean, people were involved. Most, a lot of people felt like we didn't have a plan. We didn't have a vision, you know, what we wanted to do, move forward. Or at least we didn't present our case, you know, if we had some kind of plan on what we wanted to do. So that was some of the comments. There was another comment that was asking about, duh, 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 duh. You know, there was a question asked about our, our fund balance. You know, how come we're not tapping into that? And Mr. Wall's not here, but I'll do my best to explain this. The fact that we have a strong fund balance, when we go out, if we go out for a bond and we get the bond, when we go out to sell those bonds, it was explained to me by Mr. Wall that our rating right now would make a difference of .25 basis point. What does that mean? Just the 2013, was it the 2013, you had a 2013 bond, it would have been a difference of $10 million. $10 million, .25. So to, to step into our fund balance and bring it down to 5%, 3%.
Would hurt us.
Would hurt us two ways. It would hurt our rating, and we'll go back to the good old days when we're borrowing money to play, pay our employees for a couple months. And that, that saving, it was easy math. That was, that saving was $500,000 a year. $500,000 in interest we would have had to pay the last 10, 12 years. Do the math. That's, what, $6 million? So, yeah, there's, there's a good.
And there's no guarantee that the bond would pass.
There's a good argument to have the fund balance that we do have. It puts us in a position where we're in control of our own destiny. So those were some of the comments, some of the discussion that were had in this room at a Dearborn High, so just to let you know.
Trustee Moser.
I'd like to thank the Communications Department, or, you know, this survey. I think this is amazing. This is exactly, you know, I don't want to say it told you so, but I mean, we did have a lot of garner. And we confirmed through this survey that our citizens support our schools. They love our schools. They want to see better from our schools. They were expecting better. I was even looking into even the percentage of how many people were asking, hey, do we need newer buildings or older building, or restore older buildings? I know we were not as, we did not reach our goals, perhaps, David, with in-person sessions. And I know we put them out there. We pumped up. And perhaps it is a communication issue now that we saw a lot of responses through online, which is great. So we're, we need to utilize the online platform even further. And not only this, is to make, making sure that the responses that we're getting are from the stakeholders.
Excuse me, Trustee Moser. I have to call for an extension of the meeting.
Oh, we're already done here.
Oh, you don't if it's study session?
Oh, it is a study session, yeah.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
So David, thank you for extending the survey until I made the video and I asked, you know, I, I used my Arabic, and I, I was going to try the Spanish. I was like, that's going to be way out of my league, my pay grade to do it. But I did the video, and I think we pumped up. When I called you, you were like, we're at 400 responses. Hopefully, you know, my video did a little bit of a, an uptick of responses, because I know folks go through those communication all the time. I got it, too. But I was so busy to the point where, like, I only, I actually participated in the survey, as with my wife, and we asked the same questions, and she told me what she believes and what I believe. And we submitted one response. We didn't want to send two to skew the results. But, and I did that as a parent, but I did that last minute. And I suspect the parents are the same. For the in-person meetings, I think it's, when the gentleman that was here was complaining about the doors, I actually went through the main doors, and I got into the school. And I came in late, as usual, right? So, but I came in late, and nobody was there. And then there was only, like, a handful of parents that showed up. And then there was only like a handful of parents that showed up and this parent, one, one, only one parent?
One parent.
Jeez. And and where, something was wrong. Is it us? Is it the parents? I I I'm questioning now, are we delivering those in person meetings notices? Obviously, it was during Ramadan. That's another problem, like, and it was before Suhur, uh, Iftar, I'm sorry, at five, six o'clock. So it's for for my mom to come to this meeting, I don't think she would come. She will be like, I have Iftar to cook right now. So it, but I'm glad that we did the Salina one, we did the River Oaks one. And this is even to cover areas that are not, we don't usually hear a lot from unless we're reaching out to them. And um, I appreciate the principals who who've gone out of their way, like my principal at Stow. She sent out an email in Arabic and in English saying, this is it. And David even went out of his way and put it in Spanish too. So thank you, David. I think we did our part in in garnering, using our communication model. Now, that communication model can always be improved, right? Uh, maybe TikTok, a challenge could have happened here to say, can you, I challenge you to respond to, I'm just messing.
No, that's a good idea, actually.
I I mean, something creative to get parents and students, you know, future parents. I'm glad that we got that number of future parents to respond. You usually don't hear a lot. They are not even thinking about the schools yet. They're thinking about uh, many other things. So I'm glad to see this kind of survey. This is exactly what we need to be doing. And I'm I'm even more glad to see that people are more willing to support a bond that will address the needs for our schools. People, and I know he, the gentleman again, and he's one individual, and I respect his opinion. He mentioned that we're paying too much taxes in Dearborn, and we are. And especially as a new resident because of the, and it's not only a Dearborn issue, it's a state issue with the uncapping of of property taxes. And and everybody got a savings right now in Dearborn because the supplemental, the supplemental uh, proposal failed at the city loan. Also, our bond failed. So I'm, although I did not, I saw, I would be seeing a modest um, reduction in my taxes. But I, what cost? The city now is scrambling, Mayor Hamud is scrambling to cover expenses. He would have to cut costs. There's no other way of, he has to manage. We also are scrambling right now to make sure, making sure that we have something in November to to keep the amount of money coming through from the taxpayers. And we thank the taxpayers. They vote us in, or constituents do. And they want us to make the best decision. A lot of folks came out to me and said, I'm willing to pay more taxes if you're going to build a fourth high school. I'm like, it's not me. I have six other board members, and I I'm going to conclude with this. Other folks came to me, I barely can make it, but I'm willing to pay more taxes for the schools, which we went to a large discussion then into, this is where your taxes go. Actually, Dearborn schools only get, according to my own calculation, nineteen, eighteen percent. And then we, the the state education taxes go into the state, and then we're receiving it. There is money going to RISA, and then we're getting my back m- money from RISA. But Dearborn schools with its, you know, the homestead, if I'm not correct, David, please correct me. And um, our uh, current bond that we're still paying off, we're only getting seventeen percent, I believe, according to my latest calculation.
Yeah, I I don't, I I would have to do the math for the percentage, but the amount of mils that this school district actually assesses onto the residents uh, is nine point six mils. Uh, three point, three point five mil is to retire our current debt millage. And then six point one seven mil is for the whole harmless. Now, if you own a business or a second home in Dearborn.
No, no, we're talking about just.
I'm just talking homeowners.
Yeah.
And yes, it is true that um, we do receive some of the, we do receive funds from the county, RISA, the intermediate school district, but they put that ballot proposal on the ballot, not us.
No.
We didn't ask for that, but we are, we can't, we have to be transparent. We do receive funds.
We do, and it's.
That has helped us quite a deal, uh, quite a bit as well, receiving those funds.
Right, so it's whatever Dearborn schools is getting, I want to make this clear and go on the record. I know, we have to, I have a sixteen point two percent from the dollar that you pay. So for every dollar, we, Dearborn schools gets sixteen directly. I'm not talking about RISA, and I'm not talking about the state education, and I'm not talking about taxes that is going to the this, to to the state education tax, which we we do receive back. It's sixteen point two percent. Wayne County gets seven point six or nine point six. I have to check my math again. But, and the city gets thirty three percent. So this is to the taxpayers who are watching, this is where your taxes. Please, I'm going to put up a graphic and I'm going to post it on my social media. Please come and look at it that I'm going to make because people have to know when they say we pay too much taxes, you have to know where your taxes are going. And if we're spending it on certain things that you don't feel like we're spending it on the right ways, come hold us accountable on this podium. So it it is very important to make that point because I'm tired of explaining, you know, finances. I'll I'll be happy to do that, but it's draining. And I didn't know, it is complex. But I want to make it simple enough for folks to say, from one dollar of my property tax, this is how much is going to the city. This is how much is going to schools. This is how much is going to RISA. This is how much is going to the zoo. This is how much is going to the public, the transportation system that we pay, the bus system. For every penny, this is where your, where your money is going. And if you think that we're, I know we got that accusation a lot. Oh, you're misusing taxpayers' money. You're spending it here and there and there. Please hold us accountable. Please ask me why are we spending this much on a contract? Because I, for the past two and a half years, I've been trying to do that. And I've been trying to making sure that we s- we are diligent. And I'm glad that the administration, like David just did with the survey, that we're being diligent and we do our part. And we say we have done everything possible to make sure that we're serving the residents well. Thank you. I'm sorry for taking a long time.
Okay. Is that, everyone, no more questions?